All right, now, I would like to introduce our speakers for this evening. It's the Lapeer County Commissioners. And I'd like to give you a little bit of background on what the Commissioners do. The County Board of Commissioners is the chief policy and legislative body of the county government. It has seven members elected to two-year terms from districts as established by the County Apportionment Commission. The Board's statutory duties include the following: developing and adopting an annual county government budget, adopting equalization and property assessments, appointing county officials to various boards and commissions, establishing management policies for county departments, which are subject to the Board's managing control, providing for necessary facilities, equipment, and operations, and for maintenance of such facilities and equipment, adoption of local ordinances, reviewing and adopting of grants to aid or grants and aid, providing for county participation in several multi-county human service programs, and finally, establishing personnel policies and procedures. Now, I'd like to...I would like to present the District County Commissioners for you. District One, County Commissioner is Cheryl Clark, and she's here with us tonight. If you folks could just come up. And Cheryl represents the Townships of Rich, Marathon, Oregon, and Goodland.
(Laughter.)
I'm sorry?
(Laughter.)
Okay, well, that's what was on the website. That's what we...
(Inaudible.)
Okay. If I'm wrong, folks, just let everybody know, okay? Thank you. District Two, Gary Rowe. And Gary is also the Commission Chairman. He represents the Townships of Burlington, North Branch, Burnside, Acadia, and Goodland. District Three, Dial Henning, who's here, represents the Townships of Oregon, Mayfield Precincts One and Two, and Elba Precinct One. District Four, Lenny Schneider. Lenny couldn't be with us here tonight, but he represents the city of Lapeer, Lapeer Township Precinct One, and Mayfield Township Precinct Three. District Five, Dave Eddy. I hope I pronounced that right, Dave. Is that right? Eddy? Eddy. Dave Eddy. Dave represents the Townships of Hadley, Metamora, and a portion of Elba. District Six, Linda Jarvis, and she couldn't be with us here tonight. She represents the Townships of Attica, Dryden, and Lapeer Township Precinct Two. And finally, District Seven, C. Ian Kempf, who's here tonight. He represents Emily City and the Townships of Elmont and Emily. Could you please give all of these representatives for the County Commission your applause?[192.23][192.23](Applause.) Now, what we're going to do tonight is Gary has said he would like to do a presentation on the state of the county.
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to give you this?
Would I ask to do that? Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Would I ask to do that? Yes, Robert asked me to do that.
And then after that, we're going to have a question and answer period. Thank you.
You're welcome. Good evening.
Good evening.
As you know, my name's Gary Roy. I'm the Chairman of your Board of Commissioners. I'm also the Commissioner from District Two. So first of all, I'd like to say and give you a little overview of basically your county Commissioners. We're passing out some information, so what I'd like to do is just say a few things so you'll understand exactly where we're coming from. We're going to talk basically tonight about the General Fund, and basically, what that consists of is the county, less community mental health, less the Road Commission. So when I quote "figures," the amount of employees in a county, for example, a figure of 380 today versus 480 back in 2007, you'll understand that that's what we're talking about. We're talking about the general county. When we talk about the county, in 2006, seven years ago, in August, I ran for the County Commission. I was elected, and in 2007, I became a County Commissioner. In 2007, the economy in this country was doing very well. As you know, what started to happen in 2008, and then 2009, and '10, and all the way through '13, we're still basically in a recession. So I'll give you some figures, and you'll see them on basically what we've had to do. In 2007, our General Fund budget was $21 million. Five years later, our General Fund budget was $18 million. The county lost $3 million in revenues. Of those revenues, approximately $9 million comes from property taxes. The other money comes from grants and different other revenue sources within the county. Now, I'll explain a couple of things. Our General Fund budget today is $18 million. Our community mental health budget today is $18 million. So that'll give you a little bit of scope of where things have changed in government in the last few years. In county government, you'll see I passed out a piece of literature that'll actually give you an idea, the scope of it, and I'll give you an idea exactly what we do and who we are, and the different committees and things that we set on and things we have to do. My appointments in 2013, and I'll give you an idea of the Board of Commissioners and their subcommittees. We have the Committee of the Whole, which we all set on. We have a Personnel Committee chaired by Lenny Schneider. We have a Properties Committee chaired by Ian Kempf. We have a Public Safety Committee at the call of the Chair. We have a Human Services Chair, a multipurpose collaborative body. We have negotiations teams to deal with our 11 different bargaining units. Policies and procedures and bylaws. We also have a Department Head. Historic Courthouse Restoration, that falls under BOC subcommittees. Then we fall other voting members and other committees. The Solid Waste Planning Commission, Thumb Area Regulating Commission, County Egg Board, Collaborative Planning Commission, Community Corrections, Dosa, Valley Area Aging, E-911, Central Dispatch Authority, GLS Region Five, Human Development Commission, Human Development Corporation, Multi-County Recycling, Saginaw Bay RNC and Development, Michigan Works, Thumbs Narcotics, Lamb Steel Board, Citizen Probation Council. Other liaison members where we belong. Veterans, Senior Coalition, Lake Boards, Emergency Planning, Environmental Advisory Board, Polyand Trail, Farmland, TDR Board, Farm Bureau, Soil Conservation, Fire Association, Michigan Township Association, Road Commission, District Library, Flint River Watershed, LDFA, Next Michigan Development Corporation, Southern Links Trail Friends Group, Southern Links Trail Management Council. This and that include our Health Board, Community Mental Health Board, and many other boards that we set on. So that'll give you a little bit of an idea where we're at. Now, I'll give you some good news and some figures. In 2007, we had a fund balance of approximately $2 million. Saying that, today, we have a fund balance of close to $5 million. We've been able to increase the fund balance while cutting the county. Other figures, for example, I'll give you some food for thought. We have in investments, and I'll give you some figures. These are all public knowledge. For example, we have in our Budget Stabilization Fund, we have $2 million. We have in our Drain Fund Investments, we have $1,179,000. In County DTR, Flink's Tax Revenues, we have $18 million. County Investments, we have $10,420,000. We also have $2 million in a local revenue reserve fund that we put away to help us through these hard times. But saying that, and reducing the county by 20%, basically, we lost a lot of good people. We no longer put money into recycling program. We no longer are able to put money into a hazardous waste program. We no longer put money into farmland preservation. We've had to cut all the fringes and a lot of money that we put into a lot of programs for the benefit of the county. So this will give you an idea what government has to do to be able to maintain a budget during these tough economic times. We just had our Audit Report, and I don't think there's any members of the Board behind us. When we have an Audit Report, well, they're pretty boring. But our auditors had one thing to say, that there's not another county in this state. And while we maintain our tax rate, we have not come to the people of the county for an increase in taxes, our tax rate out of any-plus counties is fourth from the bottom. So we don't collect a lot of revenues, and we haven't come back. As you know, the county is not allowed to increase tax revenues without going to the people. We cannot assess. We cannot just lay taxes on people. So saying that, I can tell you it took a lot of hard work to accomplish a lot of these things that you'll see there by the Commissioners behind you, also our County Administrator, John Bisco, also of all the Department Heads within the county have worked very hard, reducing staff through attrition, not replacing people. So there's been a lot of different things we've done. We've not been able to give any raises. While our employees, of course, we put a cap in place on healthcare. We capped our healthcare according to Michigan's plan, one was put into place. We capped healthcare costs at about $15 million for families, $12 million for couples, and about $8,200 for single families. And that's pretty much what we've done, but you have to understand, we actually went out and we did a lot of things. We went out and we researched, and we took in quotes from different healthcare providers, and we've been able to even underneath of those caps, provide really good healthcare policies for our employees. Something else we don't do in Lapeer County is we pay, we don't pay retirement healthcare. We pay into a retirement healthcare account. So when an individual retires, there's money in there for healthcare going forward. So saying that, we have no long-term liabilities in healthcare like the majority of the other counties do in this particular county, this particular state. So saying that, I think I've rabbled on long enough. We've passed out some information that'll actually show you where everything is done, expenditures by types, and it goes through everything in the county. So saying that, I'll open this up for questions for myself or for the Board. Thank you.[884.75][884.75](Applause.)
Is this the mic that's going to work? Okay, looks like Tim's got a question.
Oh, okay.
Thank you all for coming. Dave and Dial are representatives for Elba Township, which I sit on the Board, and I appreciate you guys coming there. I wanted to say that they're there every meeting, and they give reports, and we appreciate that very much. If you had to pick out one item, Mr. Roy, you did a good job of going through everything, that you really are working primarily on to improve or to get back in place. Do you have one thing in particular that is in your mind mostly, or what are you working on first? What's the big thing? Got any confusion?
Right now, I suppose it would be the animal shelter is a big issue for us at the county right now that we've been working on. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Dave, can you explain what you're doing there so that people understand?
At the present time, we've been working very hard with some complaints that came into us in the last few weeks to reference the animal shelter. We initiated investigation, actually, we had three different investigations. One by outside person, one by the, our Administrator and the Department Head involved at the Health Department, and also by the Sheriff's Department. Those investigations came back where the Director has not violated any policies that we had in place at the time. It's going to be an ongoing process with this. It's going to keep us busy for a while, I think. Just to make sure, I think, we understand now that, you know, maybe we've made, you know, need to work on some policies that were in place there to make it better. I think what's in place now has been long outdated, and we need to kind of refresh some things going on there. But at this point, I guess, in my opinion, that's what we've been working on mostly, and we're starting our new budget also that process. So that's always keeps us very busy and keeps us on our toes trying to work out some of those figures that Gary mentioned, so.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Anybody's got any questions up here?
Actually, I do have a quick question. First off, let me say, I want to thank you guys for being here, and thank you for actually reducing things. That's not something that we normally find in the branches of government, so you guys are, folks are all to be commended. One question that I do have, being a conservative, it kind of troubled me a little bit. You guys, it's maybe a two or a little three-part question, but how much money of the county is captured in the DBAs, Downtown Development Authorities, every year throughout the county? And secondly, I'm a little concerned, recently, as announced, and I read in the paper, and I hope that you guys can clarify this for me, but about $300,000 of DDA money was going in from Metamora into renovations for the White Horse Inn. It's a great thing, but I didn't like the car bailouts either. When government tax dollars start going in with a private venture, I'm concerned, and I'm especially concerned is what kind of safeguards are in there to guarantee, to make sure that that money's going to be represented, and, you know, if it fails, what's going to happen? Maybe you guys could answer that for me.
With the DBAs and the TIFAs, they capture about $1 million of our funding. Last year, part of the Tifa district did come back to us from the city, so we were able to have that. Does anybody remember how much? $200,000. So the DBAs, we have no control over them.
I understand.
So we don't have any way to monitor what they do, or what they do with that money, or anything like that. So I don't think anybody here could answer that question, because that would be up to the state to monitor that. But it's really kind of their money, and they can do what they want to with it.
Well, maybe then you could explain to, so folks know, because I was, when I first got into this, I was really amazed at just how much money that, you know, I don't, you know, I've only had heard it secondhand. You guys could do a much better job explaining what tax dollars the DDA is, you know, what it takes and why it takes it. You guys are familiar with that, we're not.
Well, we fought that to at least have a say in where that money goes and how that money's spent, and so far, we haven't been very successful at that. That's all at the state level. That's all something we work with our state reps and our senators with, and, like I said, we haven't been successful, so.
But what I'm getting at is, my understanding is, those are tax dollars taken, every city, Lapeer, Emily, various local villages have an area. Within that area, all tax dollars that are taken in, whether it's 911 millage, whether it's for seniors, whether it's for library, that money is captured, goes into what's called a DDA or a Downtown Development Authority, and then, you know, works on roads, flower boxes, whatever might be, and it's all a good thing. But I think that a lot of people don't understand just how much of that money is used for flower boxes and all these really nice things. We've got a lot of, you know, we've got a lot of other things that that money might be better used for, and I'm just, I said, my point is not, I'm not trying to be hard-nosed with you guys, but people need to be aware of what's going on, because...
Yeah, I don't know the percentage. Do you know the percentage?
No. What about...
Maybe I can shed some light on this DDA question. That's been a question I've had since I've been a Commissioner, and a tough question. And we changed some things at the county, basically. The ad valorem taxes basically comes right off the top, the DDA's take it right off the top. And most of the municipalities were actually capturing senior millage, medical care facility millage, they were capturing 911 millage monies, they were capturing all different kinds of monies. What we did with the municipalities, okay, we've kind of relinquished the ad valorem taxes because we have no choice. This was a 10-year project that was put in place back in the '70s, and guess what happened? It never went away. The state just kept renewing it. So your tax dollars, they're supposed to go to the county, go into these DDA districts, downtown development areas, or TIFAs, or whatever. We actually, most of municipalities now, there's only a couple left, have agreed not to capture extra-voted millage. We put a little bit of a squeeze on them, because we told them there were certain things, for example, that they were eligible for from the state that we wouldn't sign off on if they continued to capture extra-voted millage. But it's your tax dollars, it's county tax dollars, it's dollars that could go into the seniors, to the Sheriff's Department, to the veterans, to a lot of different areas within the county that's going back downtown into these DDA districts. Does that help explain it?
Absolutely. Again, I just, there's so many, most people don't understand what's going on. We certainly know, this is not your guys' effort. If we want to voice a concern with that, or if a person wants to take a complaint to that, we should take that to our state Senator and our state rep, and let them know how we feel about that, and take the issues up. That's where they should be taking...
Yeah, you should take that to the state rep and the state Senator. They're very well aware of this. They've been made aware of it many, many times. They've actually been working on some things inside. It really came to light when down in the tri-county area, all of a sudden, a millage was passed by the people for the zoo. And then all of a sudden, they took a look at this and said, where's all this money going to, to all these municipalities? I thought we voted to send this money to the zoo. For example, when you vote for a veterans' millage, you would expect that money to go to the veterans. In Lapeer County in that particular case, except for one municipality we've been talking to, it all goes to the veterans. And along with the medical care facility, pardon?
Three.
There's three that's capturing veterans?
Dryden, Columbia, and...
All right. Not Metamora.
Metamora is that capturing?
I don't think so.
Well, then, is there three capturing veterans? Are you sure, or only one?
I think it's all four.
See, it's been a problem. We continue to work on it with municipalities, so. We keep fighting it, and we fought it for a long time. It is dollars.
Is there a place where, if a body wanted to find out, how would somebody go about, find out throughout the county, what areas, what's being captured where? Or is there...
Well, what I would do is, I would go to, first of all, if you're going to the village of Dryden, or if you're in the village of Dryden, or if you're in, the Townships don't necessarily have the ability to capture too much. Most of it's in the cities, and the villages where there's downtown development districts. The city of Lapeer does not capture extra-voted, but they capture the largest amount of Tifa and DDA districts, because they have a lot of Tifa districts, industrial fertility districts...
What is the tip? I'm not playing with...
Well, they're industrial complexes. That actually, they can do the same thing with an industrial complex, they can use that money. I'll cite a case that really irritated this Board. For example, what they did, and sometimes how they abuse these situations, and we don't have a problem talking about it, because everybody's aware of it. The city of Lapeer used Tifa money, was supposed to be going into that particular district for development of the industrial area, to use a big portion of that money to buy a fire truck. An attorney made the ruling that the fire truck was an extension of the fire plug, so...
(Laughter.)
Attorneys can do a lot of things, as we all know. So I'm sure Commissioner Kemp would like to...
I would love to.
Love to talk on this issue.[1575.15][1575.15](Laughter.)
But it just so happens that my wife went to an Emily City Commission meeting tonight, because she's on the DDA Board for the city of Emily City, and I'm proud to say is usually the one no vote. But what this really is, is you've got tax increment financing, that's TIFAs, and as Gary said, that is the industrial areas. And then you've got DDAs, which are exactly what they say they are, Downtown Development Authorities. They were all set up late '70s, when they basically took the taxable and capped it and said, okay, everything that is taxed above and beyond, those districts can capture a portion of the taxes from within that district. So if you have, and I'm just going to use the Emily City DDA, because I'm most familiar with that. The Emily City DDA district is the old downtown section on Third Street that we all know. It runs out to M-21, and it also goes down and captures the industrial plaza. Now, one might say, what in the world would the industrial plaza be doing with a DDA capture? The reason is, is because that's where the major tax, you know, tax base is for the city of Emily City. So they capture those taxes. The law also allowed them to capture on extra-voted millage. Extra-voted would be, as Gary said, your seniors and your veterans and the medical care facility and those sort of things. The county has no ability to say anything about the capture from when it was capped back in the '70s. What we did have the ability to do, and what we've pretty successfully done, is to say, okay, we are not going to participate with your community in any new economic development in your community that we have a say-so in. And I'll give you an example that just happened, gosh, within the last three weeks. Emily City was still capturing from the medical care facility. It was the only extra-voted they captured. Mishda came through with one of their new programs for rehab, for home rehab, low-income home rehab, and the county had the opportunity to sign off on it. And basically, HDC, who's our home, we basically, for lack of a better term, since we don't have a housing department within the county, we kind of sublet it to HDC. HDC recommended that North Branch, Emily City, and Elmont be the three communities that receive that money based on the state's requirements, not based on our requirements. The Board stood up and said, okay, guess what, Emily City? You can have that HDC money, but you can't have it in your DDA district, because you still capture from medical care facility. Emily City quickly had a meeting, decided not to capture, which was the last one that they had that they were still capturing from. So that's the way we have been successful in getting those captures removed from the extra-voted, because let's face it, if it's on the ballot and it says, this money's going to the seniors, everyone out in the community, when they vote for that, expect that money to go for the seniors. They don't expect it to go to fire trucks, or murals, or anything else. Now, from the original cap, there's nothing that we can do about that. And it's very frustrating if you're a Commissioner. I believe the original cap money is about $600,000 now. I believe the original cap money is about $600,000 now. So, that's very aggravating to us.
$600,000 annually.
$600,000 annually, right. So, that's kind of what the DDA's and the TIFAs are all about. One of the real problems right now is that, and they're a six-year process, every six years, they have to renew, and of course, they always renew because it's just, you know, someone else's money. But one of the real aggravating things right now is that a lot of, and this is what we feel was with the fire truck, a lot of those DDA and TIFA funds are just being used to supplant the general fund budget of the local district that they're in. So, whether that's, you know, road improvements or fire trucks, they're not even being used for what they were originally intended for. And they were intended to sunset, they just don't, they don't go away, so. Hope that helps.
Yes, thank you very much.
I'm going to add one thing quickly. We have been, in fact, I think LaPierre County was one of the early voices, working with the Michigan Association of Counties, to especially look for legislation to eliminate that capture on specially-voted millages. And I think we've made some progress. Gary related the incident with the Detroit Zoo. That's already created some legislation to stop it in one specific case. I think that's a wedge where we're going to see further backtracking with legislation that allows us to have a voice in any specially-voted millage captures by local districts.
Anybody got a question?
Can I go back to the first question then? The first question was what we were looking at, going back and replacing of things that we had cut. One of the programs that we cut was the wraparound program. It deals with high-risk kids that are placed out of the home. We try to keep them in the home and provide the services in the home so they stay in the home. LaPierre County realized many, many years ago that we were losing a lot of money with the childcare fund. Our childcare fund was going up about $100,000 every year, and we couldn't afford it, so we said, "We have to do things differently." So, we put in place several prevention programs. One of them was a wraparound program. Because of the funding cuts, that program ended, but that program helped us be, in the last 13 years, 10 of those years, we're the least amount of kids in out-of-home placement, and we're one and two in the other three years, which is a really big deal for us, for our budget, because when you look at a kid that's in an out-of-home placement, it's $150 to $750 per day. If you have to go to Maxi, it's $750 per day. And our program with the wraparound cost about $3,000, $4,000 to keep that family together. So, it was very inexpensive for us to do that versus putting them in a facility, because I don't even think the $150 a day facility is there anymore, it was in Pennsylvania. So, we are looking at trying to implement that back into our program. CMH, Community Mental Health, kind of took that over, but they ended it very quickly and said it was only going to be for their clients. We have juvenile court and DHS that need that services, so we're working hard to try and put that back into the budget and be able to bring some of that program back, just to keep that childcare fund down, which is a huge, huge cost for the counties. The other area that's, we're working on, is we were a commemorative county for Vietnam, or for World War II and for Korea, and we have filled out the papers and sent them in to be a commemorative county for Vietnam. That means that we will do three to four functions every year for the next four years, ending in 2017, to honor the Vietnam veterans. As with the Korean and the World War II, we had a grand finale that was phenomenal, so we are looking at more volunteers for that, but we will be a commemorative county for the Vietnam veterans and hopefully honor them over the next four years. Thanks.
We did have a question that came in. Where do you folks, in the trying times that we've had over the last couple of years, do you see us, have we hit the bottom and are creeping our way back up? Where are we there? And where do you see, how do you see LaPierre County in the next five years?
If I can start the answer to that, I think we're cautiously optimistic that the downslide has stopped, almost, especially, half of our income for the general fund is from property taxes. We have data that shows from equalization that that has, in the past year, just barely declined after, obviously, a very precipitous drop in the three, four years before. So, if that stabilizes or starts to grow, which nationally at least is already beginning to occur, that stabilizes half of our revenue in the general fund. So, we're cautiously optimistic. We can, I think we can say, though, that we're not out of the woods at this point because our expense budget is still, at $18 million, is still somewhat more than our expense budget, our income budget. So, we're, you don't want to be planning a lot of new things and growth when you know that your income is less than what you're spending. Gary was very good in outlining the, some of the funds that we have available that can cushion and have cushioned. We would have been in much worse shape without that cushion over the last five years. But knowing that, knowing that things are, we hope, stabilizing and will stay that way, and there's quite a hot discussion locally and nationally about how much progress we're making there, but at least on the broad statistics, things are better than they were. And so, we will and have started, for example, to give what I would call temporary addition to salary for our employees who had none for five years, and we're going to continue to look at that. We are one of the lowest-paying counties in this area, and certainly in comparable counties in terms of our salaries for employees, and we have to deal with that. We'll be looking at that as we work this October into next year on budget. I was going to say also, LaPierre is one of the few counties that has a multi-year budget. We have a two-year budget, and each year, we continue that two-year budget, and John Bisco and Craig Horton actually give us figures for the next 10 years, and we keep adjusting them as events happen in the, both the expense and the income areas. So, that's a little bit, and I'm sure my colleagues have other things they want to add.
Somebody else wanted to comment?
Again, I'd like to thank you all for coming, we really appreciate it. This is a two-part question. The first part of the question is, is the county responsible for, I think it's called the LaPierre Transit Authority, these buses that run around?
No.
No?
They're an intergovernment agency with five townships.
They're a government agency with...
They're an agency.
Funded by five townships.
Right, they're an intergovernment agency funded by five townships, and the city of LaPierre...
Who's responsible for it?
They have a board of directors. They're not a nonprofit, they are a government entity, but they're very similar to a nonprofit.
They're an authority.
They're an authority.
They're an authority, and what an authority is, is just like LaPierre County ambulance, there's a number of municipalities, be it township, cities, villages, that gather together to form an authority, and that's basically, for lack of a better term, a taxing authority, so they have the ability to go out and run millages to fund themselves, whatever that might be. I mean, we have a number of, we have a 911 authority, we have an ambulance authority, we have GLTA authority within the county, they're all made up of different groups of municipalities. We are not a member of that authority and have no, you know, say-so over that authority, although I would like to add that GLTA did provide the buses for the fair, and we did pay them to do that, just for the record, so.
Well, most of the time, you see these buses running around with two people in them, one is the driver. And there's got to be a better way to do this, so who would we address? How do we address this authority to maybe do this a little more efficiently?
Should it be their board?
You'd have to address their board.
It would be a twofold answer, actually. One would be their authority board, and the second would be the boards of the local commissions of the towns, cities, and villages that are a part of that authority.
There is some rules that people don't know about GLTA. If you need a ride, they have to come and pick you up. They can charge you a lot more, but they have to give you a ride. And if you're already on their bus route, then they have to pick you up, like CMH, Community Mental Health, contracts with them. And so, if they go pick up your neighbor, they would have to also give you a ride if you're already on their route that they go in every day. So, there is some things that they don't tell you. I know I represent Deerfield, and Deerfield's part of them, but I have a lot of Deerfield residents say that they won't come pick them up, and so, we've been working on that to see what's happening there, because they're paying the money, they should get the rides just like everybody else, even though it's farther out than LaPierre.
Well, it just seems to me it would be more cost-effective if you're going to pick one person up to do it in a $20,000 van instead of a $100,000 bus.
They should be able to have some cars.
Thank you.
Bob, while we're waiting, that authority meets every month, the township has a person, a liaison person, that happens to be on the board, that comes and reports to general board every month, too. That's the place I think we need to go with that. It's a good question and something they certainly, we've asked them, too. Any other questions?
First of all, one thing, I'd like to recognize our past chairman, Dave Taylor's here with us tonight. Thank you, Dave. And the only other thing, I wanted to expand a little bit on what Gary said earlier, and that is, it's very true that the county went from 480 employees to 380 employees through the last hard time. The truth of that matter is, is that the vast majority of those employees were done through attrition. And that's why you didn't see, you know, headlines in the paper that LaPierre County lays off 40 employees, like you did from other municipalities. We saw that coming, and that's why I wanted to recognize Dave Taylor. We saw that coming a number of years ago, and as people retired, we did not replace them unless they were in what we considered to be crucial, you know, employment. And the sheriff's department's a little over 60% of our budget, and we still have as many troopers, or as many deputies, I should say, on the road today as we did when we started paring back the employment of LaPierre County. Interesting enough, I think, is that when I go out and I talk to my constituents, one of the things that I always ask them is, "Do you see a large reduction in county services since 2007?" And overwhelmingly, the answer I get is no. And so, the real question, in my opinion, when it comes to government, is if you can eliminate 100 jobs out of a 500, you know, one-fifth of all your jobs, or a little more, and none of the citizens really see a reduction in services, well, what does that tell us about where the rightsizing of county government should be? So, I think that's very important, and just to also emphasize, Gary did touch on, we are, and we bounce back and forth, either third or fourth from the bottom of the, in the state of Michigan, of the least county taxes paid in the entire, out of all the counties. And when we started paring back, and I think the commission will all testify to this, one of the things that we said was that we're going to live within our means. We are not going to look for additional revenue, we are going to provide the county services with the funds that we have available, and we know that those are going to go from almost $22 million down to about $18 million. So, we did it with attrition. The few that we didn't do with attrition were mainly co-financed positions with the state, and the state took away their funding, and quite frankly, I think that the state in many cases thought that we would pick up that funding, and the county said, "Sorry, if, you know, if you're not going to be our partner, we're not going to take this on alone." So, that's how the employment situation in the county worked, so, thank you.
I think I want to add, just for clarity, the 380 and 480 figures that we've been using includes part-time people. They're not all full-time positions, and frankly, in our county, again, because of budget issues, and certainly, the Affordable Care Act is accelerating that, there are more and more part-time positions compared to the full-time positions because of the healthcare costs. $12,000, $15,000 for individuals and families is a lot. Oh, yes, in a lot of cases, especially in the health department, we've had to shrink the hours of even part-time employees because we have to get under that 30-hour cap where after 30 hours or more per week, we have to pay healthcare. So, yeah, sometimes we get two physicians that, even less part-time, to make up for the one that was almost full-time. So, we get, dealing with the Healthcare Act has created a lot of consternation in our county. I think John Bisco would tell you, since it started, it's cost us $100,000 each year just for adding in the children who've been, you know, more than 17 and less than 25 years of age. So, it's changed our policy. So, we're dealing with that, and that's part of that equation we have to handle.
Could I ask that you folks possibly maybe touch on that? Because a lot of, you know, the county is an employer of several hundred individuals, and a lot of us, we're just the average folks. We don't know how the Healthcare Act, you know, you read a lot, but can you tell us what are some of the practical effects? You mentioned some of them, but what are some of the rules? You said this 30 hours, what's, maybe you could explain to us what that means and what that's meant to you guys, and what that's meant, again, to your expenditures, and why you've had to reduce that? Because to the average person, it is such a monstrosity, they don't get, but you guys are having to actually deal with this and budget around this, so maybe you could shed a little bit of light on that.
No, I think the only thing that we know right now is that we have to be under 30 hours of actual work time, so that includes vacation time or time off. Anybody, 30 hours or over has to be provided with health insurance, and there's a year look-back period, so that's the one thing we're positive of. Everything else is kind of up in the air, and nobody can really explain it, and they keep changing it every day, so we're being very cautious in 2014 because it's probably most of it's going to take effect in 2014, 2015, then we'll be able to answer your questions. But right now, even the experts say they're not sure what it is. If you read one page, there's 50 pages of amendments behind it, so it's very unclear actually what's going to happen and what it's going to look like.
There are a lot of accountants and consultants making a lot of money, trying to advise units of government on something that none of us know for sure what's going to happen. And so, we're waiting, as Cheryl said, on most of the information that we need to really plan. We have built in extra money in our budgets going forward, but we're not sure if we're anywhere near, even close on what's going to be required.
You folks had mentioned an additional $100,000, roughly an additional $100,000 in cost because of the children?
It was $111,000 additional cost to count.
Because kids from 18 to 26, we now have to cover, whether they're in college, whether they're married, whether they're living at home, whether they're living in California, we now have to cover them, and it's cost us over $100,000.
So, you've had about every year since 2000?
Yes. Wow. Literally, from where we sit, changes and amendments to this healthcare act come literally weekly. I mean, we walk in and John Bisco, you know, pulls us aside and says, "Here's the latest." You know, it's like the nightly news. It's, and, I mean, I don't think anyone up here is real a fan of it by any stretch of imagination. of imagination. Is it going to cost people jobs in the long run? Absolutely. And, and it's already affecting that because of the part-time.
Well, if you have several hundred thousand dollars that you're already paying more, that's money that could be used to employ people and to have, to improve on the services and that. So I, I commend you folks, and I thank you, because that's, again, a lot of people don't understand, they, they'll hear this from one person or that person, but you are, you know, you're the governmental agency, you're nonpartisan, you're just, and that's, that's a really good gauge on it. So, so it's 30, so you folks are told, at 30 hours, they're, they have to, you have to provide insurance for them, and if at 29 hours, you don't.
And we're not sure, we think from the reading that that includes, as Cheryl was talking about, vacation hours and other times, so we've had to actually cut hours back even a little further in case the addition put us to 30 hours or above. So, part-time employees are in a...
There's fines attached to all these things if we don't do it. So, so we're not sure exactly what they're going to look like yet, but there is fines if, if we don't, if you don't get insurance, there's a fine, and there's, there's all kinds of little things hidden in there that we're not real sure what it's going to look like.
Seems too bad we can't get you guys up a little higher. Maybe we might have a little more consistency there, so. Any other questions?
Thank you for having us, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.